Up open, and will you join us in the pledge, Dr. Cash?
Please stand. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Buenas tardes, tenemos interpretación en español para esta reunión. Por favor, haga una señal si necesita el equipo.
Thank you. We have headsets for the hearing impaired if you need them. And Dr. Cash, introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions.
I think I'll wait.
Okay, and we have superintendent's report.
I'll wait on that as well.
Board comments and correspondence. I'll just say that yesterday's appreciation for our employees event went fantastic. Probably 300 people and the staff, whoever organized that and put it on, thank you very much. I was happy to see that Nancy Weiss and her department did the fantastic hors d'oeuvres and the whole thing. It was very well done, and I hope the, I know that the employees appreciated it very much. Announcement of closed session, action. We did have one motion. It was moved by Ms. Parker and seconded by Dr. Paz to appoint Kristi Mendeville as the principal at Roosevelt. And I think she is here, and Dr. Cash, you want to introduce us?
Yes, I would. It's with great pleasure that I introduce Kristi Mendeville to the Santa Barbara community. Kristi, congratulations. Kristi has a master's in education and bilingual multicultural education, a BS in elementary education, a reading specialist endorsement, an ESL endorsement, and has worked as a consultant with Clark in English language development. She has been a principal recently, is currently a principal in Yuma, Arizona at OC Johnson, and was an assistant principal at Castle Dome Middle School, and prior to that was an elementary school teacher. We're very excited to have Kristi joining our leadership team, and we know she's going to do an excellent job leading Roosevelt, and we look forward to having you join us full-time once the school year ends in Yuma. So congratulations and welcome to Santa Barbara Unified School District.
Thank you.
Yes, nice that you're visiting, do some, our nice weather.
Yeah.
I think you'll enjoy it from Yuma, I mean, nice, okay.
Kristi's going to have an opportunity to meet staff, students, and parents tomorrow at Roosevelt throughout the day. We've set up an arduous schedule for her to get to know all the stakeholders, and it's going to be really a great opportunity for her to meet them and for them to meet her. So tomorrow will be a great day.
Thank you.
Welcome, Kristi. Now you're, now you're free to leave if you want.
But we'll be talking about facilities, so.
I'm quite fascinated with that.
Any public comments? Nope, okay. We'll go to the conference agenda, and Dr. Cash.
Thank you very much, Mr. Herron. Well, as board members are aware, we have been engaging in a process with LPA, our architects, to develop a facilities master plan for the Santa Barbara Unified School District. And a couple of months ago, we brought this forward to the board for further direction as to what we would do, which direction you wanted us to go. And so the document that you have before you today represents a very preliminary draft by LPA on what facility master plan would, could look like as a result of listening to stakeholders throughout the community at the various schools. And I want to start by saying unequivocally and publicly that we are not demolishing Dos Publos High School. And I want that made known and on the record that at no time was that ever considered that this school would be completely demolished. So, and I think it's important to start with that. And with that, I will, I'll have the LPA come forward and, and lead us through the presentation. It's great to see you.
Is that door up there, just in case? Thank you very much, Dr. Cash. Good evening, board members, staff, audience members. Do I have to have you switch it over? Thank you for having us here this evening. So I wanted to take a few moments, that was going to be Dr. Cash's slide. I wanted to take a few moments just to walk through a bit of the process that we've been through over the last year in terms of what the facilities master plan is entailed. Typically, a facilities master plan consists of four components, four main components. Demographic analysis, where you guys tend to stay pretty consistent in terms of the quantity of students you're housing. Facilities needs assessment, and that is where we literally walked every single school site, interviewed every principal, had conversations with them, walked and just took our own notes in terms of accessibility, things that we look for, but as well as looking at programmatic spaces in terms of how they get used, what could be done better in terms of spaces and their functionality, whether they're too small, whether they're too large for the purpose that they're used for, or whether they're just too dated in terms of the programs that they're trying to execute within that space. So kind of took all of that in with the facilities needs assessment sidewalks. And then additionally, the educational vision, and we spent a lot of time on this, and I'll go through that in just a moment as well. And I think you guys previously had a presentation by Kim Coffeen from our office regarding a lot of specifics on the program goals. From there, we did a draft master plan for each school site where we had the opportunity to go out and interact with each of the sites again, and I'll talk about that in a moment. But we had those cost estimated and then worked on some scope prioritization before we can come forward. Again, we're still in a draft mode here, so not quite finalized recommendations yet. I don't know where I'm pointing. And then ultimately, as we reach out to the community and further engagement along, along those lines in terms of where this goes next and next steps, we'd want to look at how we further engage the community and acknowledge what's been happening. So with that, just a quick process overview, we've had 10 leadership meetings to date. They were really the ones guiding and establishing the FMP process in terms of what, how this all worked. We had eight facilities master plan committee meetings. I won't go through all the specifics listed there, but essentially between these two groups, it was about 30-plus participants. I didn't count repeats here, so. It was a very exciting process, lots of input along the way, as you can see with the different activities along the bottom of the screen. We then had three educational visioning meetings. This went into a lot of the program visioning that I mentioned earlier in terms of working with elementary, and we met with secondary twice, in terms of coming up with where this district wants to go programmatically, in terms of what the vision is, all the CTE programs you have that are so exciting at your high schools, actually makes me want to go back to school. Six focus group meetings, really trying to understand all the different components that also support and go into a site, so child development, CTE, food service, wanting to understand how they work, what could work better, what's not working well. Maintenance and operations, special education, technology. We're trying to implement and make sure that we're gathering all this information so we can create a very comprehensive look at what we're dealing with per campus. And then we also had the opportunity to meet with ASB students, which is always fun and great to get the perspective from a student because they're there every day in a slightly different environment in terms of what they take in and what they're recognizing. So that was about 70-plus participants. In addition to that, we met individually, we had three town hall meetings, one at each comprehensive high school, and as a result of those, we had formed school site committees that came to each of those, and so we had the opportunity to then follow up and get comments back. Each site had about three weeks to, to take their plan back to their site, interact with PTA, parents, staff members, hang it in their staff break room to get comments and input. And then we had the principal come back and meet us here and walk us through all of the different comments so that we could address that in the new draft plans, which are what is contained in your deliverable binder. So that was about 100-plus participants. So through this process, we've engaged with about 200-plus people and had over 50 meetings. So, pretty exciting. So in terms of what's in front of you, I thought I'd just walk through the organization. I'm sure you guys have had a little time to peruse the binders to this point. But section one is really giving a purpose of the document background, talking about the process. We always like to acknowledge all the people and planning participants involved because I know it takes a lot of time for people to spend and come participate in all of this. Section two is planning and considerations, and I'm going to spend some time on this tonight a little bit because I think it's important to understand a little bit of the background in terms of what informed the plans and why what's shown is shown. So we'll walk through that in the scope of work categories. Section three is, you guys previously, I think, had a long presentation on that in terms of the program vision and standards. So those are sort of the educational specifications that developed out of all of those visioning meetings. And ultimately, kind of the big picture there is that's the real dialed-in version of the spaces and the relationships to things versus the master plan diagrams, which tend to be 10,000 feet out. So each of those little colored boxes that you'll see on a master plan diagram relate in more detail to section three in terms of diving into the details of sizes of storage associated, CTE programs, et cetera. Section four is program costs, so this starts to dive into the detail of what each of the components listed in the master plan and their associated cost. And this also talks about stakeholder and school site priorities, and we'll spend some time on that in just a couple minutes. Section five is literally a tab for every single school in the district in terms of what is being proposed. So that has the site assessments associated with it from the sidewalks, photos, and observations, breaks out the cost for that particular campus, as well as has the existing diagram. We always like to take a snapshot in time. And then ultimately, what is the ultimate plan or guide? Kind of, we look at it as a bit of a roadmap. This is very much intentioned to be long-term, and so as different projects might develop over the years, it's always a great reference to look back and say, oh, maybe that shouldn't go here because this is what's planned for the future potentially. So serves as a roadmap. It is very much a living document meant to be revisited, so. And then the appendix just gives some more detailed information about the detailed schedule of the process, meeting minutes from our facilities master plan committee, and eventually when, in a further version of this, there'll be detailed cost information in that section as well. So with that, I will, and feel free to interrupt with questions, is that okay? If it's a little less formal or we can wait till the end?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Okay, okay. I just wanted.
Any questions at this point? Okay.
Excellent, thank you. So in terms of the influences for the master plan development, these were the main things that came up, aligning with the district strategic plan, which we'll walk through in a moment, and you guys are all very familiar with. The educational facility standards, as I said, which really are creating a guideline across the board for the district in terms of having a consistent approach. And similarly, making sure that all the spaces meet California Department of Education or CDE's minimum standards, so things like kindergartens that they dictate need to be 1,350 square feet, and that is associated with a workroom, restrooms, and classroom space, that those are all, we looked at the sizes of spaces that meet those requirements. And then really defining quality for assessing the existing facilities. So kind of creating that parity among campuses in terms of what sizes of spaces and what's offered. I know at the high school level, different CTE programs are offered in different places, but basically creating some level of parity that we can always refer back to in terms of what's expected at each campus. Another large component and influence was replacing the portables with permanent construction, so that's where you'll see most of the permanent construction there, and then.
I do have a question on that.
Yes.
I didn't see that actually spelled out that clearly in the report.
Oh, we'll make that modification.
So that was a very defined parameter going into it, replace all portable.
It came up time and time again in the facilities master plan committee meetings, and it's typically as we do master plans, for the longevity of a long-range looking master plan, we tend to propose permanent construction because, particularly for portables that are older than 25 years old, just because of the longevity and the lifespan of a building or of a portable.
But those aren't spelled out in detail as far as the old ones versus the new ones?
Correct, and that's something we can.
We can't tell by looking at the plan where the oldest ones sit.
Where the old ones are, right. We can correct that in a future version, for sure, so that it's more obvious.
I would say, remember, we move portables around. So I think from my perspective, it's more about the number of quote "new" portables versus their specific location. So, because we move them around, we're moving to this summer.
But it's good to start with, when looking at this plan, which ones are the oldest at which locations?
Right. We can identify the age based on A numbers with DSA, so we can look into that, for sure. And then, as I mentioned, parity among campuses. So as we look at the influences of the strategic plan, the district strategic plan, we have aim number one of life, career, and college-ready students, so I thought it was prudent to, to kind of address what was placed in the plan that ties to this particular aim, which is 21st century classrooms, the outdoor spaces, because as we know, learning happens everywhere, not in just the four walls of a classroom. At the elementary school, it's making sure each campus has an art classroom, music, and a science classroom. At the junior high schools, addressing that with science labs and elective spaces. At the high schools, the CTE pathways, computer and innovation lab associated with the library at each, and again, this sort of refers back to that program vision and ed specs in the section three of your binder. And then professional development space for the staff. Oops, skipping ahead. Aim two, being student, family, and community engagement. So on each master plan, you will start to see the introduction of a visitor center at the administration building for parents and just community visitors. A library learning center, so making sure that, we know you have a couple new libraries at some of the elementary schools, but making sure that there's some parity in size. There was some discrepancy there. And then dedicated after-school classroom at all the elementary schools. Right now, there are some in portable, some that don't necessarily have one after-school classroom, so making sure that's across the board. And then an auxiliary gymnasium at the junior high and high schools, so to supplement community use and just providing more opportunities for the students that way. Aim number three, organizational transformation. This was addressed in the master plans with the learning center central to the students. So oftentimes, and this is not unique to your district, speech pathologists, psychologists tend to get placed in the leftover old custodial room or where they can kind of fit as people get moved around. So really looking at how to engage the whole student, and so looking at a learning center, which would include offices for the speech pathologists, psychologist, and IEP conference room, a small group space, all acoustically sensitive for the conversations that tend to happen in those spaces, and a flex office, because you never know sort of to build in a little bit of future flexibility, who might need an office in that space. But the idea that it's central to the students, easy to access, and that they're all sort of housed in one area to make that a better learning environment. We looked at special education classrooms and making sure that the support spaces that supplement those with restrooms or living skills labs were addressed. The library learning center at the junior high schools, we made sure to include a dedicated ASB room because they didn't all have that. And at the high schools, looking at the, the idea of a student union, library, and cafeteria hub in terms of how that's executed. And aim four, this is just something that's overarching in the whole plan, but really thinking about lead and green building and how that gets incorporated. And that is something that I will say is probably still a little light in the current deliverable, and so we want to look at beefing this up before this hits its final rendition, for sure. So any input you have on that would be appreciated. So with that, I was going to walk through just a couple sample sites very quickly. I chose an elementary school and a junior high because the junior high and high schools tend to work similarly diagrammatically. So in terms of how those educational vision programs from section three apply to a school site, Harding University Partnership, we have the existing diagram here. We have a key on the right-hand side that starts to talk about the program type of space, so classrooms, science, art, administration, sort of separating everything by color so that it starts to pop and read a little bit. And then also indicating things like which ones are portable, so something with a dashed outline indicates a portable versus a solid line is a permanent construction. And then another thing we tried to note was, we know that you've been doing a lot of work in the district, and so showing what recent projects or even projects under construction at the time we started this. We wanted to make sure that we stayed away from money that has already been spent in a great way, and so places that remain the same between the two plans, we didn't want to spend our dollars twice where possible. I should say your dollars twice, not mine. So looking at the future or potential conceptual plan for the Harding University Partnership, you'll see that this building essentially stays the same as does this area that's recently been renovated. The, you'll see that the key grew, and that's the big difference between the existing and the proposed or conceptual, is anything that is 25 years or older and stays solid would be eligible for modernization dollars. And so that would be any of your sort of solid-colored classrooms that stay the same here. The second would be keeping the same program type color around the outside of it. You have the white, which would indicate new construction. And then the last one, which is the hatched, that's considered reconfiguration. And so if you think of it from a dollar standpoint, there's sort of three tiers of dollars, modernization being tier one, reconfiguration being tier two, which really starts to speak about moving walls around and reconfiguring a space more significantly, and obviously tier three being new construction from scratch. So you can see where we were trying to expand some of the administration functions, the learning center over in this area at the main entrance to the campus, keeping this ultimately the lower primary grades with their hard courts and play fields next to that. And then ultimately, if I do a little bit of toggling, you'll see we have portables here, a couple portables here, portables here existing, and then this building, trying to maintain as much playfield and play apparatus space and keep as many components as possible. We did initially try to sort of wedge a building in along this edge, but it was very close to the property line, and we couldn't quite get all the program needed. So ultimately, the current draft proposal is a two-story building that would house those classrooms and some of those science and art and music functions here. Music is actually reconfigured space next to the multipurpose room. So then you start to see that we have a library, media center, tech center here with the multipurpose, so very social spaces off of all the learning courts and play areas here on this particular campus. We've added some additional parking in the back as we maintain our fire lane into campus, and this one is obviously, as you know, very unique because it has the bridge situation, and the parking's very challenging on this campus as it was on some others.
I have a question about this. When you described the tiers of modernization, new construction, and reconfiguration, are those priority tiers or are those cost tiers?
Cost tiers.
Cost, thank you.
Priorities, we'll get into in just a moment. Were there other questions?
Yeah.
Yes.
It would be helpful if the, if the key would show that.
In that order?
Yeah.
Okay.
That way it kind of reminds us that, you know, you keep moving forward and, right, left to right, that it's going to be a little more expensive.
Okay, perfect, that's a great note.
And I also have a question. On that campus in particular, and you talk about the bridge, is the street that's closed off owned by the district, or does this district have an easement over it? How is that, do you know?
Mr. Hatt Young?
I just, I've been asked that by the community.
That street belongs to the city, and there are numerous utilities and storm drains that run down that street, and what we do is we have an easement to construct the bridge over that street. It was done so for safe passage between the two sites and to make it accessible. So the actual street, other than the area that is chained off for our parking, we have an easement to use that, but the street itself and the utilities underneath are all the cities.
And is there any time to that element, to the easement, or it's forever?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
And we can indicate and make that more clear on this diagram. That was the case as well at Franklin Elementary, where we had some city and utility easements that we made more clear on the diagram, so we can update that as well, just for clarity. Were there other questions before I move on to one other site? I won't go through, there's a lot, so I won't go through them all unless you have specific questions. But I wanted to walk at least through a junior high, the high schools and junior highs, just because they're much larger sites. We always do an overall view and then a zoomed-in view, more to the campus core, so that you can start to understand the programs a little bit. So again, the key stays essentially the same for the existing campus. Thought Galita Valley was a great choice just because La Colina's very similar in nature. So kill two birds with one stone, in a way. So this looks at the conceptual, just from a zoomed-out view, again, something that we cost estimated and can be pulled out easily, but we cost estimated on the junior highs, new synthetic fields in lieu of natural grass. So that was something that could be priced. And again, as we talk a little bit later about cost in terms of how things can be pulled out and talked about in terms of priorities, the overall detailed cost estimate makes that a little bit easier moving forward. So if we zoom in, again, the existing view that starts to look at all the different program components, and then how this might change potentially. Again, Galita Valley shares with Santa Barbara Charter School. I think one of the big things, there's a couple campuses in the district that have shared facilities, so some of the conversations were, how do you make it easy to access each campus with maybe a little less day-to-day interaction? As you can see on this particular campus, Santa Barbara Charter has these back grade-out rooms as well as these front grade-out rooms, and you can start to see some overlap here where kids might be crossing paths consistently to access those elective classes. So one of the things we looked at doing was actually moving Santa Barbara Charter so that they really kind of keep into this zone and keeping the junior high students sort of to the left here. So we introduced a new electives building to take the classrooms out of here and move those. And then additionally, to replace the portables that are sitting up here to the left, we've added a new classroom wing there with a learning court outside of that. The other component here, the office and/or the learning center and parent center, we added to the front, so this would look like a bit of a new front door to the school in terms of adding a little new construction to the front of the campus. And then we looked at how we might reconfigure the library into more of sort of that stepping stone between here and a student union at the junior high level, and how we might help that transition between those spaces and how they're used. Because these days, a traditional library seems to be a little bit in flux in terms of the introduction of so much technology. So cafeteria and multipurpose areas remain the same. And then we introduced where the old activity room was, we reconfigured that into some additional storage for each locker room, an ASB classroom with some storage for them, and then added the, a new activity, high-volume activity room behind that, and then the new auxiliary gym that I mentioned earlier that's added to each junior high and high school. Are there questions on this one?
I'm a little puzzled by a student union concept because students aren't, you know, when you're at college, you're free to, with your in-between time, but what do you, how do you describe that?
I think, and I don't have the document right in front of me, in the third tab, there's a, there's a program element for that, and so it really, it's just meant as the library, well, at the high school level, we sort of put sort of the cafeteria, student union, library next to each other so that you might have studying that's right adjacent. So it might be a more social, active space where students might go after school and study adjacent to the cafeteria. And at the junior high level, it really still maintains as a library and that idea of, you know, a technology lab off the side of that, but just having enough space that there might be the library portion that's sort of traditional books and stacks, but then maybe some soft seating and things of that nature that allows students to collaborate together. So some of that's addressed in a little more detail in that third section, broken down. It, again, it's a little hard at this 10,000-foot level to, to show all that detail, but that is listed in section three.
But it wouldn't be where teachers would bring the students and drop them off, it would just be an area, say, after school?
Correct.
Or during lunch?
Or during lunch?
During lunch, yeah.
So as teachers, oftentimes, the school library's open during lunch?
It would function that way, the same way it does currently, in terms of lunch after school before school access.
Okay.
And in all three of our high schools have moved toward an in-day seminar for all students to engage in. Two of the high schools, it's more directed study, and there, I mean, I don't know if you visited, DP implemented this year, there, every time I was there, there was standing room only in any of the public, quote "public spaces," like the library, the cafeteria, H30, the big rooms.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Jo May, I'm from LPA.
Go to the mic. If anyone in the audience, if anyone in the audience wants to help, you know, participate, please move forward so we have more easy access.
Okay, all right, sorry. Hi, I'm Jo May Lau from LPA, and I was assisting Lindsay with some of these master plans for your district, and just wanted to add to that student union comment is that, you know, a lot of research has been done that, you know, social spaces are just as important as academic spaces at, at schools, especially high school, you know, providing that kind of space where students can interact with their peers as well as staff members. And then also, like, we're seeing a lot of trends where high schools are providing, like, reducing the amount of space that is like for library and stacks because they're moving towards digital books, and that space is getting pulled out into a more social kind of space where students can study before and after school and, and potentially, like, you know, like, they could stay there longer after-school hours before, you know, they get picked up or go home, and that student, that, that space becomes that student union kind of space.
Sorry. Thanks, Jo May. Other questions? So those were just two examples of the many campuses you have in the district, but that's just a representative sample. just a representative sample in terms of the elementary site plans as well as the junior high, high school site plans in terms of how to read those and how to use them, potentially. So with that, from that point, after getting a lot of input and revising the diagrams based on that input, it's, it's a lot to take in, so how do we break that down into something a little bit more tangible? And so we look at breaking it down into scope of work categories. And so we've broken that down into 15 categories. These correspond to how we cost estimate the process and then also how we looked at prioritizing the process in terms of a way to just make it a little bit more palpable, I guess, to the palate because it's a lot of information to take in on those diagrams. So if we walk through each of these rather quickly, we have modernize and reconfigure kindergartens and classrooms. So this would look at replacing or repairing roofs, walls, the basics essentially. So this looks at painting the interior and exterior, replacement of specialized casework, et cetera. But essentially, if a classroom is staying a classroom, it would get new carpet, new lighting. If it's eligible for modernization, this would apply. So really, sort of looking at finished treatment versus the reconfiguration where we'd be moving walls and things around. So that's category one. Category two somewhat ties to that, so in terms of existing buildings and systems and toilets. So this really works with HVAC restroom upgrades or needing modernization or reconfiguration, HVAC, lighting, electrical, plumbing, so really looking at all the different systems. And then similarly, scope category three ties to a little bit of less of what you see, so the underground services that come in to provide sewer lines, updated water service, et cetera. So those are the next two categories. Category four, we actually broke down into an A, B, and C, just again, to make it a little bit more how you might look at separating or prioritizing things. So 4A are kindergarten, those are larger classrooms with workrooms and restrooms associated, so they tend to have a slightly higher cost. And so we like to separate those out. Item B are just typical classrooms, and item C are CDC program classrooms. The fifth category, science and electives, so any of the CTE programs at the high school, science labs, things like the art and science labs at the elementary schools, those would all be encompassed under scope category five. Item six, improvements to performing arts, rather self-explanatory. Seven, multi-use and food service. So this has anything to do with modernization or new construction of these spaces. So the activity rooms that we added at the junior high or that at Galita showed moving into new construction, that would be there, the auxiliary gymnasiums at the junior high and high schools, things like locker rooms, whether it's modernization or new construction would all fall under this category. Things like lunch shelters are included in that particular category because they're associated with food service. So that's all in, as you look at a detailed estimate, those are all broken out specially. So, and then improvements to physical education are actually what I mentioned first. So I said those in reverse order, I apologize. Scope number nine is admin and staff support. So ultimately, anything that you saw in orange on the plan associates with this category. So this has anything to do with administration moving it to the front door, some campuses where the admin was a little bit buried. We wanted to look at how that, sort of the secure perimeter and how you approach a campus and find an admin from a safety standpoint. So sometimes we had to look at moving an administration, so it addressed that. Staff collaboration and workrooms fall into this category as well as the parent and visitor centers. And then the 10th category tends to cause the most, because it's so broad and encompassing in title, student collaboration and student support spaces. So this is actually what entails, the Learning Center, the Library Media Center, things of that nature, any student collaboration spaces. So anything that really supports, even though it all supports student learning, anything that has to do with really that collaboration and direct student support. Number 11, site access and lighting. So this is really looking at anything from making sure there's enough lighting as you come into a parking lot, to making sure there's safety locks, some of just the different issues that are associated with how you move and approach a site from a security standpoint. This also could entail security cameras as needed and emergency address systems, et Category 12, quads and outdoor learning courts. So on the master plans or the conceptual plans, anywhere you saw sort of that lime-green look and it was either labeled quad or learning court, that would fall under category 12. Exterior play spaces are more what you would associate with physical education or athletics in terms of playfields, hard courts. These, the top one is more about sort of interior to the campus where students gather on a passing period, for instance, versus more athletic components associated with item 13.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Do learning courts include school gardens?
Yes. That would fall under learning courts and quads.
Thank you.
Thank you. 14 is classroom flexibility or 21st century learning. And essentially, for this cost exercise, we applied a per-classroom dollar amount to allow for the purchasing of flexible furniture. So it allows for more mobile teaching in terms of being able to reconfigure your classroom from a lecture setting to a small group learning setting very easily. And so that's what's encompassed in the 21st century learning. And last but surely not least is infrastructure and technology, as we know, it's ever-changing these days, and so making sure that all the systems related to that and that there's the right amount of feed into the campus to support what you guys are trying to do educationally falls under that category.
A question on the 1 through 15.
Yes.
Is there any order in those, of importance?
No. I'm going to get to your importance question in just, just a minute.
It's just 1 to 15, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's just 1 to 15. There's no rhyme or reason really to the order.
Okay.
Except that it tends to go from, yeah, interior to exterior space, but that's about So with that, total program costs. So this is, I believe, Section Four in your binder here, and so we'll all have the big gasp moment in a second. But essentially, as we look at developing costs, we base it on the program and campus needs, so all of the input that we receive to create the draft plans are what is reflected in the cost to date. The total project cost includes construction costs and soft costs for the scope of work identified. And then this just lists sort of some of the items that are excluded from this budget. I will say the most important thing to note about the costs are that they are in today's dollars. Well, I guess we're already a year behind, $2,014. And so in terms of planning for potential projects as you identify a budget, it's always good to aim for two-thirds of a project cost because the other third, you want to make sure is left for the soft costs and things of this nature that are sort of unknown. So just a conservative way of kind of planning. So now the big gulp moment. So when we added up every single site in the district, you can see that the number totals quite a bit in terms of a long-range plan of what we're looking at. We still have a couple numbers missing for Los Flores Preschool and District Office, which we're having estimated actually now. And so those will be added in for the future, in the future draft of this. So you can see the big, the big bullet number there is $829 million. And so I wanted to walk through a little bit more of the detail in terms of how this was addressed. So on subsequent pages in your deliverable, this is where you start to see those 15 scope categories creep up again. And so, again, these are all estimated based on the plans that are in the draft binder currently. And so you can start to see where that, where the dollars line up in terms of some scope items, for instance, on the elementary schools that don't have a CDC program, you see nothing there. Where there's no performing arts to improve, you don't see anything in those categories. But you can really start to see where, you know, where there tends to be more new construction on a campus versus where there might be a little less modernization, for instance. And so this is just a, an interesting way or a great snapshot in terms of how you can look at potentially, looking at prioritization as well. And so I'll just sort of click through, again, there's a couple pages of these. I will point out a few, just sort of big-ticket anomalies, I guess, as we go through. So as we move to the junior highs, I think it's on a click here, you'll see, for instance, the Lacumbre Junior High and Santa Barbara Junior High, their costs for modernization are exponentially higher than the other two. We have included in those estimates replacing the historic windows on the historic buildings on those campuses. So some of those anomalies are captured in these numbers, which blow them a little bit more out of proportion than what might be average. So I wanted to point a few of these out to you, just so you're aware. Additionally, improvements to physical education, again, this sort of takes into account the addition of the auxiliary gym at every junior high school. So those numbers tend to creep up. And then additionally, as I mentioned earlier, we did cost estimate putting synthetic fields at each of the junior highs. That's, might not be a priority in terms of other needs, but it's, it's worth pointing out that that's in there so that that can always be pulled out as well as you're considering where you head with this. So similarly, at the high school level, Santa Barbara High, again, and the modernization number includes the historic windows, which pushes that above the rest. And then at Dos Pueblos, where it was more of a phased plan in terms of replacing more classrooms with new construction, you'll see those numbers creep up as well. And then you can look across, so then as you're looking at, this breaks it down by scope category, so you can see across the board as you add up all the schools what, you know, some of the higher items are versus some of the lower items. And so from here, because we try to, again, keep trying to break this down in a little bit more of tangible pieces, we had asked during the prioritization and stakeholder input phase, we asked both the leadership team to help prioritize as well as each school site committee. And the school site committee priorities are listed out, they're verbiage exactly in your binders, but to help graphically sort of comprehend this, we tend to put it into chart format. And so as we look across the board, so this is the leadership team committee priorities in terms of the votes that came in, if you want to call them votes. And so as we start to see some trends happening, you'll see tied for first place were both modernization and reconfiguration of existing kindergarten and classrooms as well as new construction classrooms. And then in second place, it was 21st century learning classroom flexibility because that's one of those items, you know, as you think about, I realize this is a very big number, you are not alone in your district by having big numbers. A lot of school facilities in California are just aging and need improvement. And so this is something that can easily be done. Technically, it can be done in a portable classroom and affect the learning environment very quickly because it's flexible furniture and it's how students learn and are able to manipulate and interact and collaborate with one another. And so I think that was very telling as a priority. And then third, last but certainly not least, was new construction of the preschool or CDC component. So another way, because we always try to ask questions in a lot of different ways, actually. So this was looking, and I should have started with this, this is looking at all the scopes as a district. So as you look at all of your campuses across the board, this is what was felt are the top three or four priorities in terms of what the district-wide scopes would be. Then we asked the question, because this is also what we ask the school sites, what about, how does that compare to if we ask it per school site? So for instance, older schools may have the priority of more modernization because they just need a little more TLC because they're older versus campuses that might have some newer facilities. So in this one, you can see actually the top two line up, new construction in classrooms pretty resoundingly across the board, and modernization and reconfiguration of existing kindergarten and classroom buildings. And then following in third, which didn't quite correlate to the previous priorities, were the multipurpose and food service updates. And interestingly enough, those were mainly, I think, in the elementary schools and a little bit in the junior high schools. So looking at a very similar chart, these were how the school site committee priorities stacked up. So for every school site committee that came to the town hall meeting and had the chance to interact, they were asked the same question because I think it's always important, they're there every day, living at that site, breathing that air, and beautiful Santa Barbara air, I'm jealous. And so they were able to correlate that. They listed them out, we listed them out in your binder as well, but we wanted to tie them graphically again the same way. So their first priority was site access and lighting. So again, that was pretty weighted on the elementary school side, a little bit less so as you get out into the junior highs and high schools, interestingly enough. New construction classrooms came in second, and then in third, the student collaboration and student support services. So those were just a couple data points we wanted to make sure to bring to you in terms of some of the input we received from the various groups. They definitely start to, some of them line up for sure in terms of new construction and a lot of the modernization on the previous slides. But these are ways that we tend to help start the conversation in terms of potential priorities and how you might go about that in terms of breaking down different things. So whether there's a specific category, the new construction category, if you were to go back to the program costs, is a significant number when you look at all campuses, but is there, for instance, certain things that you're able to accomplish, like flexible furnishings on every campus, and then how you might look at phasing different projects? So those are some things to consider and happy to kind of work through exercises like that with you. But I wanted to leave plenty of time for discussion and questions, and if you guys have any for me or...
Wow, I got to say, I asked Lindsay, I said, "You get 45 minutes." Look at that.
Oh, yes.
That's pretty darn good. Great job. Oh, Kelly.
Hi, thank you, Dr. Cash, board members. I just noticed that some of the people in the audience are taking notes and pictures, so of course, all this information will be available.
It's online already.
Online, on the district website, if you'd like to reference any of it, that's all.
Thanks, guys.
Ms. Parker.
I don't even raise my hand, Mr. Herron, you can now read my mind. I guess my first question is, we don't have any public comment on this?
This is, you know, really, this is informal.
You have to be shocked.
If you have a comment or want to talk, feel free to do so, and it won't be limited to three minutes, except for Lanny.
I would love to hear public comment, and then I would like to jump in with my questions or comments.
Lanny, if you'd like to comment, or anybody else, this is an open discussion, it's not going to be real formal, hopefully.
President Herron, members of the board, Dr. Cash, thank you for the opportunity to offer some thoughts on this very important issue. As someone who's watched facilities in the districts, district for many years, it's something that I think it's great that we are proceeding as we are in terms of at this timeframe having this level of discussion. At the same time, I have some real concerns in terms of an $830 million price tag, I just, you know, I'm, I'm not sure how relevant that is to discussion in terms of, it's something that I, I don't think there's any chance bonds could be passed for that amount in, over a long period of time. And probably the max, even between the elementaries and the secondaries together, might be, you know, 80 or 90 in each district, or, I'm just throwing figures out, but I mean, the point is, is that, you know, that might be, you know, a fifth or a sixth of that total. And then how you prioritize from this very wide list as to, you know, what would actually be done. The concern that people in the community have, at least that I talk with, and that may, may or may not be representative, but I think it's representative of some, and certainly some people have been involved with schools for many years, is that what, what people really want is, if we're looking toward a bond of $80 million or whatever the figure might be, this is how much the bond is going to be and this is what we're going to spend it on, rather than we have $830 million of projects and, you know, give us, you know, pass a bond of 80 or 120 or 160, whatever the figures might be, and then we'll kind of figure out how those funds are spent in terms of, that's, I just, I don't think the community wants that in terms of, I think what the community wants is, you know, if we're going to have a bond, and, and I hope that we do have a bond, it's something that, these are what the projects are going to be, and, and then these are what it's going to cost. And so that's just a, by way of general comment in terms of, so that I'm, I think it's good that the process has been gone through, a lot of new ideas have been floated out, and I, I think that that idea generation process is something that, that can help in the final, the final output. But, but even then, and just, just briefly to comment, for example, you know, we looked at the Harding Plan briefly, and once again, you know, the proposal is to spend $24 million on Harding, okay? We, we saw what was being proposed for Harding. It's something that, without going into each item in depth, that sure sounds like a lot of money to me to spend on Harding Elementary School for what was being proposed, or McKinley, 29 million, or Monroe, 23 million. I mean, the point is, these are really big sums of money, and I'm not even sure that if all the money were there, that's how we would choose to spend it in terms of, and, you know, I added up the costs of... you know, I added up the costs of replacing the windows at Santa Barbara Junior High, La Cumbra, and Santa Barbara High School. I don't know if all of those modernization figures were for the windows, but it was over $50 million, and, you know, it's something that, you know, I'm pretty familiar with the windows at each one of those schools, you know, and I just, I wonder, you know, if we went to the National, I know this is a different topic, but if we went to the National Guard and said, "We'll give you $50 million for the National Guard armory," would the students of Santa Barbara get more out of that National Guard armory site than new windows at Santa Barbara Junior High, La Cumbra, and Santa Barbara High School? And I guess, according to the master plan, they wouldn't, you know, so it's something that, you know, I'm concerned about that. And I guess I'm also concerned too, that as far as planning goes, you know, there are many issues on the district in terms of the location of Santa Barbara community, Santa Barbara Charter School at Galleta Valley Junior High School, the location of Adelante Charter School on Franklin Site, you know, if we're going to be spending $800 million, maybe we could, as I said, if that's really, if we're really going to be visionary and that sort of thing, I'm not sure if just, you know, working within this existing framework is exactly what I'd do. I'm not sure if all those comments entirely are clear, but as I say, we're all kind of responding to this information. And, you know, currently, the proposal is 353 million would be spent at the high school level, 205 million at the junior high, 271 million at the elementary school. And that's, you know, that's a lot of money, and the point is, I just, as I said, I think that the board needs to give more clear direction as to, you know, if you're looking at an $800 million project or something like that, be clear and say, you know, that's what we're going to do. On the other hand, if you're only thinking, "We're doing a $150 million project," then, you know, that would be a different sort of plan. I do think just one further thought along those lines is that, schools are evolutionary, so that whatever master plan there is now, the people who are in these chairs 10 years from now, Mark, Frank, and I will all be here, but in any event, the, it's something that, they will have different ideas and go in entirely different directions. So it's something, I think all you can do is try to make things a bit better while it's your turn at the wheel. You know, just the final comment I would make too, was that notwithstanding that we would be spending $800 million, if you look at page 114, the outdoor play area matrix, most of the elementary schools would be losing thousands of square feet of both hard court and play fields, as would some of the junior highs, and I'm really concerned about losing playground space at some of our junior highs, excuse me, elementary schools, and spending more than $200 million on them. So, I don't know where we go from here in terms of, it's something that a lot of information has been generated, and yet at the same time, I'm not sure where the process is going. So as a member of the community who's very supportive of bonds and would like to see lots of good improvements in our schools, I'm not sure if we're moving in that direction right now, in terms of we're generating information, but in terms of getting toward specific proposals that would be before the voters, I'm just uncertain whether we're moving in that direction at this time. So I want to be very candid with that and say that is my concern at this point. So, those are initial comments, I'll undoubtedly be writing corresponding with you further about them in the coming weeks and months. So thank you very much for your time.
We do have written comments from Dr. Evenstein, but I'd like to make sure those get into the public record. Ms. Parker?
Thank you, and I so appreciate the input that we've had from people that have participated in the community process and the school committee process, and I'm really, I'm so impressed with the work that LPA does. I mean, we've been attempting here to bring sort of a level of detail and understanding to our facilities that we haven't attempted in the past. And I think we've been better recently, I know we've been better recently, but there have been certainly times in the past when there's been a lot of fantasy out there, and we've gone to voters and haven't been concrete, and then I feel we have, you know, accidentally misled. And so, in a funny way, this is also a fantasy. And so, in that level, but it's also reality. It's a reality in that this is what our schools need, it is, it's a fantasy in the sense that, you know, it is not going to happen. As Dr. Evenstein said, you know, with 800 million close to, probably when you're done, it's going to be close to 900 million in needs. The question is, then, you know, how useful does the, does each individual site plan become? Because I look at this, and we've never had anything like number three, the section three that's just on, you know, what are the standards? And that is amazing. And number four, as much as I hate the numbers, we haven't had that before either, and I just think it's so incredibly helpful. I don't want to hide from the community that these are the needs at the individual sites, and so I look at these and go, "Okay, well, we need to know, we need to know what each of the sites needs." But as Dr. Evenstein had said, I know that our sites and our community are struggling with, "Well, this is what we need, but that is never going to happen, so what do we do next?" I appreciate that in here it makes clear that this is looking 10 to 15 years out. I think 10 to 15 years out, we would be lucky to fund probably 10 to 20% of that 800 million in terms of the facilities' needs. So for me, and I'm looking for direction from our staff on this, and from our site administrators, and from our community, but when I look at this, I'm like, "Okay, well, let's take what's here," and the refinements that come forward, because I know that this is a draft, and say, "Okay, well, reality is 10 to 20%, so where are the exact priorities within that?" And by exact priorities, I want to be careful, because LPA makes it really clear that any actual design work, I think that a lot of community members are getting like wrapped up in the, "But you're putting the parking lot here, and this building there," and any actual design would be done by a local architect based on the priority needs that got identified and the funding that was available. And so just because right now it says, "This is where the library is," it doesn't mean that a design team and a community is going to come together when that actually gets identified and funded, and say that this is where it is and this is what it should look like. LP is really clear that that is not what they're doing in this document. It is, so I think it's important not to get caught up in that. I want to be sure that we stick with, "Okay, this is sort of broad scope, this is broadly what we need, and so what can we now do in terms of identifying priorities based on the real numbers that are even, you know, possibly out there?" Because obviously, we couldn't do this based on our state funding, we would have to go out for a bond to even address some of the things like, you know, portable classrooms and modernizing site utilities, things like that, it's beyond our current scope. So that's what's running through my head, I look forward to hearing what my fellow board members say and what district staff have to say about it, but I'm really thinking, "Okay, if we do have this all laid out for us, is it then time for our site committees and for our community committees to come back together and say, 'All right.'" Because I think Dr. Evenstein is absolutely right, that it would be the wrong way to approach the community just to say, "Oh, look, we have $800 million in needs, and so we're going to go out for some smaller bond and then pick and choose." I do think that it's important to define right off the bat, once we have a facilities master plan, what can we actually do? So that's what's running through my head today.
Dr. Pass?
I think one of the things that jumped to my mind in thinking about all this, and actually it was before Dr. Evenstein came up, was how do we keep this plan alive moving forward? And I think that's one of your points that you're making as well, is that we're sitting here, thinking towards the future, how much time are we talking about how does this plan kind of move forward and sort of stay alive and doesn't become something we put on the shelf? And I think that's an important thing that we're going to need to address as a district of moving forward and readjusting as we move forward. But having said that, how do we readjust? How do we even look at this plan in a way that makes sense in terms of priority making? And one of the things that I was thinking about was, I appreciate the fact that everyone did exercises to put priorities, but that's perceived perception of our needs in our district. And it doesn't necessarily mean that people don't see it, but my way of looking at it could be different than, the next person could be different than the next. And that's different than what the data tells us, what our site needs assessment has told us, that may be completely different. We have windows that obviously are going to cost a lot of money for older historic buildings, but they may fail all tomorrow, who knows, you know? And that then becomes a priority, and that becomes the area that we need to address. So I think we need to be ready to kind of look at it in that respect too, to kind of really look at what does our sites tell us, not what people perceive it to be, but what do our sites really are telling us? What are those big needs right now that our site themselves, the buildings are saying to us? And I think that's really important to put out there, because I think one of the things we may fall easily into a trap of thinking, "Well, we'll fund all the stuff that's really easy to do, that'll be our first thing, and then we'll go into the higher cost stuff." And then the higher cost pieces will then come to the forefront, because they all fail at the same time, or the windows start failing in two or three years down the road, then we pay for it in a different way. So I think that's one of the things that we need to consider, and it's, and again, all due respect to all the people who have participated, but again, I don't think that's necessarily the way that I would approach it. I think we need to also consider our individual sites. We have looked at this building, for example, recently, I don't think anyone necessarily totally anticipated that that elevator out there was going to completely fail and take the amount of resources that it did, or that they had other problems going into it. So I think those are the things that we also have to kind of look at in terms of looking at priority setting.
Ms. Lamont?
Thank you. So, just one quick thing, on page 98, I think the Franklin numbers are missing three zeros, just because I was like, "That doesn't look right." And, so I actually thought that, I attended one of the public meetings at one of the high schools, and so I thought that the process was actually excellent. It's a process that we haven't engaged in, a process that really incorporated the school sites, the students, the parents, to understand what their perceptions were of the needs. And I think that those perceptions influence how we think about this moving forward. My mouth did drop when I saw the 839 number, million dollar number, I don't think that we have that capacity. So as far as priorities, truthfully, my priority has, with this whole process, has been the portables. I don't know if that's consistent, replacing the portables, I don't know if that's consistent with the sites, I would love to hear what they prioritize. I also would be supportive of, I mean, I'm just going to put it out there, going forward and having a study done for a bond, and I was actually thinking a little bit higher, 25% of perhaps what's being proposed, not knowing what is going to be on our 2016 ballot, and whether or not there will be another bond for something else on the ballot, and knowing that that could potentially influence us. I think that with a number of 839 million, it's clear that the need is there, but that's just not within the capacity of our community to do. So I do think it's a matter of moving forward. My personal priority would be to replace portables. I don't know how much just that replacement would cost, but I think it is true, what Dr. Pass says, that even if that is a priority, it doesn't then supersede our immediate needs that we have at school sites, given X situation happening that was unanticipated.
Ms. Idelson?
So I appreciate what my fellow board members have mentioned, and take it all in. I also feel the portables are a priority. And then I wonder if we look at the current facilities and take into account the potential population status quo of our students in the future, or as Dr. Evenstein said a couple meetings ago discussing that, I thought that was really interesting to look at, you know, how many students will be coming in the district in the coming years. I also have a question about, are we up to compliance in terms of earthquake standards with all these facilities? Is there, I mean, are there potential priorities that looking at these ideas and concepts don't address?
That's always possible, I think just the recent history indicates that the 2010, or not 2010, but the 1998 bond that were passed, where there was a whole list of projects that were intended to be done, but a lawsuit interrupted the delivering of that. That was based on an unidentified need that was identified through that litigation. And so it would be disingenuous for anyone to sit here and say, "There is, there's nothing out there that we can anticipate, there most likely is," that could take whatever good plans and good ideas the board and the district have and morph those into something that requires a response.
So, and I tend personally to look at these things very conservative in a way like, "Well, if the windows are falling down and it's an important building, we should address that." But then when I hear numbers as to what that means, I'm just like, "Wow, this is, you know, not a little paint and scraping will handle." And then regret that maybe we didn't do more early on to maintain. So, a lot of food for thought, I guess that's what I'm feeling.
Can we have a clarification on that point? I don't think you meant to imply that that number in the millions was strictly windows. I think that's what made it higher, but...
Correct. No, that was not entirely, right, no, that was not entirely windows. We did have, there were separate estimates previously done for the replacement of the historic windows at those campuses, the four campuses, and most of them, Kelly can maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but I think hovered in about the $8 million range. I mean, it's high because it's historic windows...
But high, but nowhere near what was implied...
But not, for instance, 15 million for that total category, for instance, no.
Thank you. Dr. Pass?
So, the one thing I failed to mention is to completely appreciate the work that you all did, which is, I think, when I looked at the binder, I was amazed, I was like, "Wow, this is a lot of really wonderful work." So I appreciate that. The point that I was trying to make is to, and I would say that my fellow board member, Mr. Herron was alluding to it, is that when we look at our needs assessment that we did, that we really need to revisit that, as much as we're looking at this other piece, because that's the beautiful intersection that we have to deal with, that's what we have to confront, is that reality that some of those pieces that we identified in our needs, facility needs assessment, that some of those, even if they're not the shiny new thing that we want, probably going to take a little more priority, and I would agree with you all in terms of portables being one, in terms of that, and I think that was also addressed in that as well. So that, that's the thing, that's the reality. It's like, "I would love to have a new car, but I can't afford it, so I have to deal with the car that I have and continue to fix it." And so I think that is the thing, I don't want to spend lots of money on my car, but I have to. And I think that's where we have to kind of meet the, sort of the rubber hits the road piece, and we have to meet that reality.
One of the things that I keep thinking about, it's great to say we want to replace portables, we've got 160-some portables, let's replace them. But it's not that simple as I see it, because this master plan says, "Hey, to replace these portables, you've got to build up a new two-story building," and that becomes, then that takes the whole master plan into play, you can't just go out and replace portables. And, you know, and again, that's why I asked the question about the age, because some of them are really old, and so, yeah, let's replace the really old ones, but it's that simple, because right next to an old one might be a new one. And so, how do you just replace the old one and not the new one? And so you've got to almost look at individual sites and individual portables and see which ones can be replaced with something that fits this plan. And that may not be an easy thing to do, because you just can't go up, "Okay, let's replace the two portables at Adelante," or "Let's replace the two portables at Dos Pueblos." Well, what do you replace them with? Well, you've got a two-story building, you've got to replace them with. And so that's why I asked the question about the age, because I think that plays into it. it. I think we have to face the fact that some of these, maybe the windows would be a good example, need to be done with our general fund money, our maintenance money. I mean, some of these things, we may have to -- I mean, I think everything I read is that, you know, the state wants us to start looking at our income and pay for some of these things out of our income, not rely on a bond. And so I think that plays into maybe a window here and there that needs to be done. You know, once a year, replace a window. And if you want to make a comment, come up to the mic and...
When you're ready.
Yeah. And, you know, I liken this report the items that we thought were priority that haven't yet been done, because this group in the last four or five years said, "Here are some priorities, we couldn't do them." So I would look at those things and say, "Okay, where do these fit into the plan? We've already said they're priority. How does the site feel about that?" I was amazed, the low number of people who thought technology needed to be helped, Mr. Rickman.
I think it's a good...
I think it's a good.
I think that's a good thing.
I think it's a good thing, but I was really amazed at the change from six years ago, that now nobody even speaks about the need for technology. I love it. But that's why, again, I asked about the scopes, because I could see on there where some of those scope items could be done realistically, but how does that fit into the overall need for priorities? But I think our job is twofold. One, what is a realistic number that we really think the public would agree to in a bond for the elementary or a bond for the secondary? And two, once we figure out what they realistically might go for, how specifically can we spend that money to the highest and best use? So we can say to the public, "We think we need these dollars, and here is what we will spend them on," to as specifically as possible without leaving a total wiggle room to spend them at the discretion of the five people sitting up here when the funds are available. And I think that's one way that City College got in trouble, and maybe in the past, we got in trouble. I mean, look at the years it took us to get the libraries, and yet that was, you know, a promise we made that we took a long time to fulfill. And we have to make sure that, within reason, we say to the public, barring any unforeseen disability issues or earthquake issues or something failing dramatically, that here's how we're going to spend the money. So I think those are the things that we're going to be faced with, because we're not going to get 800, 900 million dollars, you know? And I don't think that was -- this plan is a roadmap of, as a project comes before us, the board up here would say, "How does that fit the master plan? You want a garden building there? Hey, that's where a new auditorium is planned in the master plan. Let's find someplace else." And I think future boards will get a lot of use out of this when they're asked to do things on a site that is in conflict with this master plan. So I think there's a lot of good uses of this, but there never was the intent to spend 800, 900 million, but it's a roadmap. If you back out of your driveway and you don't know where you're going, you're not going to get there, you know, or you're going to have a heck of a time getting there. This is that roadmap. And Dr. Paz, and then our guest in the audience.
You know, on that point, I would definitely, if there's an easy outcome of this whole process, is that we institute a way of reviewing this master plan as a board yearly and update it and allocate some funding for that. That's an easier one.
And Mr. Heron stole what I was going to say, in that it becomes a framework for conversations about volunteer projects. It's not like, you know, "Well, it doesn't fit, so we can't do it." It's like, you as decision-makers need to be made aware of where it could fit, and then make a decision, "Well, we don't care. This takes precedence over what we decided earlier. Here's the reasons why. This is what we do in response to that. Staff give us recommendations how we can accommodate that." None of that currently exists, and it really is just kind of a series of one-offs, is what...
Yes?
Just a quick comment, Mr. President, Heron, and then board, thank you for -- I had a good time participating on the Facilities Master Planning Committee, but just from...
Can you give your name?
My name's Arjun Sarkar. I'm out at UC Santa Barbara in Transportation Services. And one thing that you were talking about, general funds, Mr. Heron, and it got me thinking is that in terms of energy efficiency projects, where or on some of these buildings, we've gone to putting solar arrays on, where you're taking funds, removing general fund liabilities and putting them for energy efficiency projects through bond funds or through outside projects, that might be something that could be teased out of the master plan and give some guidance to infrastructure projects that could save you over the long term. So I was just thinking that that might be something we might want to look at as well.
Thank you. Ms. Parker?
Two things. One is that going through this and sort of watching this process and then looking at this draft document, I really, I realized that I had talked previously about the need for a landscaping master plan that would sort of go with the facilities' master plan because that's so, and even across the district, but I realized in this that, in fact, what we need is a landscaping standard, not a landscaping master plan, especially if with some of the great facilities ideas, you know, here where things could be changing. What is a landscaping standard for an area that might change in five years, that kind of thing? And especially with the drought. But so I really appreciate this in terms of the way it has colored my thinking about landscaping.
You're about to get something like that.
Okay, great. I also want to circle back to what Dr. Cash started the discussion with, which is that Dos Pueblos is not being torn down. And I want to be careful, because it was so interesting to see how a community can get, can be misled or misunderstand. And so even as these facilities' plans move forward, I just want to be really clear that we have said multiple times here now that we do not have and do not expect to be able to fund every single idea at all the school sites, that we are not going to be doing 800 or 900 million dollars of work, and that we understand that, so that our sites understand that. And that as both this facilities' master plan evolves and as the needs of the district evolve over time, that what they see in a particular site plan can and will change.
President, Heron, members of the board, and my name is Mark Ingalls. I participated in the planning committee and also on the bond measures that were passed. I would caution the discussion of, I think, we're talking about a planning document and not needs. I think when we use the word "needs," it's going to some way suggest to the community that unless we spend 800, nearly a billion dollars, our schools are somewhat deficient, and that's just not a reality. They need a lot of work, they need a lot of attention, buildings do, but our kids are getting a phenomenal education and phenomenal facilities, and we're doing a lot with what we have. And I don't think we want to undermine the confidence of the community and suggest in any way that we're falling short in being able to serve our students. So I would suggest maybe that the document be referenced as a planning document and not a needs document, or identifying specific needs. Wants and needs are very different, I think, as you've all alluded to that in different examples, but we have a very generous community that's very aware of their contribution of, you know, 150-plus million dollars the last 25 years. And I think to suggest in some way that that was just a token of what's really about to come would be alarming for the community, and I think very difficult for the district to deal with in the court of public opinion in the community. So just a suggestion that maybe we keep the context of the document is just a planning tool and not a needs document. Thank you.
Frank Stevens, retired educator. I want to start by saying that the organization with LPA did a wonderful job, and I appreciate all the input in the meeting. Second, I want to make it clear that I don't agree with Lanny. He can't speak for me where I'm going to be 50 years from now. Many of the notes that I took, you have already covered, because my concern, as I've said many, many times, is our essential priorities are safety and health issues. We have to be sure that we're covering those, because the community expects that of any school or school district. And as I look at that, I know that the portables are an important issue, and I think we need to focus on the portables. Are there portables that have to be torn down because they're unsafe? Are they falling apart? Or has been suggested with the older car versus buying a new car, can some of those be modernized to the point that they are equipped in a way that they're satisfactory learning environments for our schools? I live in a home that's 132 years old. It's old. I'm not going to tear it down, because I can put little money into it from time to time and make sure that it's very functional and very livable. And I think the priority in the portables can be the same way. I'm not sure it's an age issue on portables as much as it is a condition issue on those portables. And I did want to say, I really appreciate one priority up here, and that is a priority that was focused on lighting and access to the schools. To me, that is a safety issue. If schools are saying to us as a community, "The access to the school is not satisfactory. The lighting in the schools is not satisfactory," I feel we need to look at that as a safety issue that meets the needs of those that have identified it. Thank you.
Dr. Cash, can you bring us up to date on the Prop 39, the money we're going to be spending on lighting?
Yeah, well, that's 99% interior lighting, and it's being done on all of our campuses, and the projects are started and have been improved.
There was some outside, wasn't there, Mr. Hattig?
I... Were?
There were some outside lights. However, the priorities that the board approved for the first two years of funding, a majority of that is interior lights, changing to LEDs. Those plans are being developed right now in anticipation of a lease-leaseback contract. Our plan was submitted, our plan was approved by the state, and we're now getting together construction documents as our next step prior to coming to the board to award a contract.
Good, thank you. Dr. Paz.
And we also didn't, didn't we also propose to do a pilot in terms of looking at safety and looking at the use of video cameras at Santa Barbara High School?
Yes. Yep, we're really close to bringing that pilot to the board for a discussion.
And that would be helpful to address Mr. Stevens' concern in terms of safety and lighting. I think at least it's a first step. It may not necessarily address everything that we're thinking about, or what Mr. Stevens was thinking, or maybe what we as a board or facilities, you as a facilities director are thinking of as well, but maybe it will get us in that direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Cash, how easy would it be to remind us or bring us back a list of all the priorities that we did not fulfill from the current plan?
Well, the two of you guys are, you're going to get that.
Okay.
We talked about that on Monday in Cabinet, last Monday as well, because it's wrapped around finishing and completing some current projects with the opportunity to do additional work. So we want to give you the full scope of what's left undone, what may partially be completed. You're going to get one of those projects next Tuesday. Unfortunately, the roofing projects we'd hoped to do at two junior high school campuses, both came in significantly over the architect's estimate, and so that'll be part of that conversation, but there'll be a bigger conversation about all of the projects.
Good, thank you. Any more discussion, or questions? Come on, we've got 35 more minutes.
Well, I'd like to say something. I'd like to really, what I want to say is that in no way was an 800 or 900 million-dollar bond proposal ever even entered the remotest corners of my brain. And I think that the phrase "roadmap" is the most accurate, and looking at this as a living document is very important. I disagree with Dr. Ebenstein in one essential part, and that is, you are going to make decisions that are going to last 150 years. So what may or may not occur in classrooms 10 years from now, 15 years from now, five years from now, I would agree is subject to debate. But what those classrooms can and cannot do, those are decisions you're going to make. Somebody else made those 150 years ago for Santa Barbara High School, and the assumption was that for the next several hundred years, all students would need to do would be to move from room to room and sit in rows of six, six rows of six chairs and listen to a teacher talk at them. And so I'm hopeful with the idea that the decisions that this board will make will recognize that flexibility will be the most important frame of reference in any facility decisions that are made, because the board 10 years from now is going to have to live with the decisions that you guys have made in relationship to what can and can't be done in any new facilities or even modernized facilities. I just think back to, gosh, it was just a short while ago, I'm going to say a decade ago, when I would have been up here as a principal banging my fist, not literally, figuratively, on the podium, saying, "All of my classrooms must have 10 to 12 outlets hardwired, because every student's going to have a computer that's going to require a cord to the internet." And every classroom needs to be configured to accommodate that. Well, the reality is, is that, you know, what we need now are learning spaces that are totally different in size with no hardwiring or very little hardwiring except the central core areas. And I can't even tell you whether we'll even need that hardwiring to core areas five years from now. I mean, Mr. Rickman, when was the iPad introduced to the public?
About five years ago.
Yeah, so my goodness. I can't even imagine what we're going to get five years from now, or two years from now, or three years from now. Those goofballs up at Google are pretty dang smart. They're going to come up with something. So for me, I see this entirely as a planning document. I see it as an opportunity to understand where our school communities think they might want to be. My goal from this particular point is to help the board go through a prioritization process, looking at all the input you've gotten, all of this, asking our school communities for additional input, and then asking our community as well. What do you think are the most important things? Not just how much money do you want to spend, but what would you want to see happen? Would it be this, or would it be that? I think those are important conversations, and I agree with Dr. Ebenstein. Luckily, it's 2015, and if this community, this board felt we should place a bond measure in 2016, I think we've got enough time to plan out, do it thoughtfully, and deliver on what we would ultimately promise to the community. And I think what I've heard everyone saying, and I agree completely, we need to be as coherent and concrete as possible in what we say we intend to do, understanding that something could get in the middle of that promise and force us to do something else. But I'm excited. LPA has exceeded my expectations in what they have done, the work they've done, the information they've created, the opportunity that allows us to talk about where we could go. I'm ecstatic. I've read the document, I don't know, five or six times probably, and each time I read it, I find something new I didn't see that stimulates my thinking. And I think that's important, because you all are going to be making decisions, I think, for the next century. So those are my parting shots.
Thank you, Dr. Cash.
No pressure.
Anybody else? Audience, anything? Lindsay, thank you very much. Great presentation and a lot of good, hard work.
All right, thank you.
I think we will adjourn. Thank you very much.
Mr. Heron?
Yes.